Good afternoon. We will call this meeting of the New Ulm Planning Commission meeting to order. It is Thursday, July 25th, 4:30 PM. Item two of the agenda would be to approve the minutes from the June 27th meeting.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
A second then.
We have a motion and a second approving the minutes as presented in any other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item three is a public hearing. Three point one, consider the application of Dan Brom on behalf of Alliance Bank for a variance under requirements of section 10.11 of the city code to permit a street address that does not comply with the city streets numbering system.
Thank you. The applicant in this case is Alliance Bank. The current street address for their existing building is 322 North Minnesota Street. The street address for their new building based on the city's address plan is 306 North Minnesota Street. Zoning of both properties is B3, which is a general business district background. The city's subdivision regulations are found in chapter 10 of the city code. I would note that within that subdivision, there is a variance procedure. Section 10.11 establishes regulations for the numbering of houses and buildings, and those regulations are attached to your agenda packet. Subdivision five of that section has to do with MAP, and this section states that the finance director shall furnish to any owner, occupant, or agent of any such house or buildings upon application and without charge such information as will enable such person to procure and display the correct numbers upon the premises in question. The reason I included that is it establishes that the city is responsible for setting street addresses. Now, the function assigns this to the finance director. Ever since I've been with the city, it's been the billing official that was responsible for it, and then within the past, I don't know, five, 10 years, I became involved with it as well. So, at the present time, Alwet and I kind of share that responsibility. The address plan for the grid portion of the city is attached as map number one. And I will note that when I started working for the city, within the first couple of days that I was here, I was marched in front of that particular document and said, "This is our address plan. This is what we use." And what you see there is the same document that I looked at 42-plus years ago, so it hasn't changed since that time. The city also has address plans for the city's outlots and annexed areas. Upstairs in our vault, we've got plans, you know, for those areas. We also now have made them a little bit smaller and gone with using a three-ring binder. The city also has campus addresses where we cover a larger area. MLC has a campus address, so there's one address and it covers all of the buildings, you know, within an area. We have it out at the airport, you know, there's one address, but it covers all of the hangars and, you know. And then, for example, a public school has got one address, but it covers like their field areas and everything, so. Alliance owns the west side of block 62 north, that's lots eight through 14. Alliance is in the process of constructing a new bank building and parking lot on lots 12 through 14. The drive-through would be located on lot 11. For a multi-lot project, the location of the front door determines the building's street address. So, in this case, find the front door, locate it on a map, we look at map one, that determines the address for the property. City staff cannot find any evidence of a variance being granted in the past 42 years for a street address variance. When I started working for the city, one of the things that I did was to start, you know, a list of all of the actions that are taken by the planning commission and then forwarded to the city council and what took place. And so, we went through that particular document to see if anything had transpired, and we could not find anything of that type. Attached is a copy of the application. Map number one, which is an original and current address plan for the grid section of the community, I mentioned that previously. Map two is an aerial photo of the site with parcel lines and current and proposed addresses. Map three is a lot line map with current and proposed lot addresses. And then, the fourth attachment is section 10.11 from the city's subdivision regulations. I'd like to go through each of these attachments at this time. One thing I'd like to note on the variance application, if you turn to the backside of the application, there is a statement, item number five, that says, and the answer to that particular question is, "The necessity to seek a variance was created by city staff by their interpretation of city code." I believe that statement to be inaccurate. The address is determined by the city's address plan. So, we simply pull out that address plan, we find the front door, that determines the address. So, in this particular case, the necessity to seek a variance was the result of the action by the bank, since they don't want to use the address that the city's address plan assigns to the property. Map number one, I think we've all, you know, talked about that. As you look at it, we have center street down the middle. We have street addresses going north, we have street addresses going south. You notice that the addresses flip from the north side to the south side. Side street addresses are what I'm going to call side street addresses, first north, first south. Those addresses are uniform regardless of which side of center street you're on. Then, on the right-hand side is a listing of the addresses as you proceed from front street to garden, actually to summit. Map number two shows the current bank address and location, 322, and that's kind of in a rust color. And then, we have the blue-colored area, which is the proposed bank location, and that shows, you know, the assigned address of 306 and then the requested address of 322. To the left and right of those locations, you can see addresses that, of properties in those areas, and, you know, where the blue location or bank location is, if you look to the left of that, you see 307, 311. If you look to the right of it, you see 311. So, you know, that's generally the address range that you should be in. If you go to map number three, this is a depiction of the current lots and the city's address plan by lot, you know, those are provided for the subject half-block of property. Those, the addresses are listed in red up towards the alley, and then for the other side of the alley, they're shown in black. And we did the same thing for the addresses that are west of North Minnesota Street. Then follows is the section of the subdivision regulations on the numbering of houses and buildings. The staff has some concerns about this request. First of all, it's not consistent with the address plan that we've been using. Secondly, it's not consistent with, you know, our past actions in giving people street addresses and trying to maintain a standard street address system in the city. Third item is, what are the unique circumstances that necessitate the variance if it's to be considered for approval? And then finally, approval of the request sets a precedent. And so, if this particular request is approved, you know, we're likely going to have other people that make requests, similar requests in the future. Should note that, you know, over the years, we periodically get requests about or comments about addresses, not a lot. I would say maybe two or three times a year. But, you know, it is something, it is a topic that does come up for conversation, you know, periodically. So, that would conclude the staff report.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so anyone that wishes to speak on the matter, need to step to the microphone, give your name and address.
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Reiter, Regional President for Alliance Bank here in New Ulm. And, you know, I just wanted to do, as you're all very much familiar with, our construction project that's underway. The Rime family is making a very large commitment to the city of New Ulm, and so, we respectfully request the granting of, be able to retain our 322 address. I think most of you can understand why we have the interest in doing so. I realize it's unique to the past, but I think a unique characteristic and part of the reason to consider our request is that we do own that whole half a block. It does not change, it does not require other existing property owners, businesses, to have to change along with us. I realize you'd have to reallocate a number to the current site, but again, since we own the entire block, it's really, we're the only ones that are affected. You know, part of the reasons that we want to retain it, we've been at this site, we've had this address for in excess of 50 years. It's very important from the standpoint of familiarity in a lot of different ways. Granted, our existing customers are going to know where we're at, but yet, it's more than just our existing customers. A very major impact is the advertising, you know, brochures, paper ads, websites, different things like that. A lot of that type of advertising that taken out is multiple years at a time, so it would require a lot of notifications changes. We originate residential real estate mortgages that are sold off in the Freddie Mac secondary market would necessitate notifications for each of those. We have somewhere in approximately 1,500 loans that would require those notifications. We are an active participating lender with FSA, RFA, SBA, Federal Home Loan, and VA, and each of those organizations, it would also necessitate notifications. And so, it creates, I think, quite an extensive requirement for us, and like I said, based upon the commitment we're making to the community in the area, and the fact that we own that whole half a block, we're making, respectfully making this request. Dan, if you want to...
I'm Dan Brom, and I'm the one that made the request. I guess I'll offer my apologies to start with, Dave, on the second page of the request. My interpretation of the code simply stated that blocks would be aligned on the one side with even numbers and on the other with odd numbers. The code did say that a map was kept, but it didn't say anywhere that the map could never be changed. I understand the residency to reservations and to not change that, but I believe and want to reiterate that it does create a hardship for us in terms of the massive amount of notification. I think some people would easily say, "Oh, this is a bank, it doesn't really matter where we're located," but in this particular facility, it's not more, it's more than just a retail banking location. It's where we conduct and will conduct a lot of our operations. That's why the ownership of the bank has chosen New Ulm. We plan on running a great deal of the operations there. When we get into those sorts of arrangements, we need to have physical street addresses pertaining to the location, and so, to go through and make those changes would create a hardship. That being said, I just had a question for you, Dave. You had mentioned earlier about campuses. When a campus is designated in the city, do they follow the same set of rules where that address is coordinated to where that front door is for a campus? Which building would they choose? And what if there are multiple doors? How is that street address ascertained in those set of circumstances?
Well, I think you have to understand that a lot of times, addresses have been assigned, probably going back to the 1800s. And so, you know, in the case of the college, that's been there for a long time, predates me. The same thing with the airport, been there a long time.
Would something like 3M be considered a campus?
I think in that case, there's only really one major, there's major buildings and they each have their own address.
They do in that particular case.
Yeah.
In this circumstance, because of there's multiple lots, I mean, if you even look at 322, we have a main entrance on one side of the building and a main entrance on the other side of the building. What facilitated at that time that it be chosen to be 322?
Well, if you look at the map number three, which was included in the agenda packet, you can see that 322 kind of lines up right in the middle of the building, and so, I assume that that was the basis for determining that particular address. I would note that the building was built in 1968, which was before this particular section was in the city code, so I, but I assume that the city has been using that type of address system, you know, for a long, for a longer period of time. So, it was done by somebody, not myself.
Sure. Meaning that it was done prior to this code being adopted, so, but they followed some level of logic, but in this particular case, there were two front doors, and they could have chosen one or the other, and both would have sufficed based on that set of rules.
Or they went by the middle of the building, it looks like to me.
Okay. Is there a minimum number of lots that a business needs to have to be considered a campus?
No, it's, I think it's more on how the property is laid out.
Okay.
And it's as much a decision of the entity that is there as it is the city's, I mean...
Okay.
In this particular case, there's one building, so, you know...
Oh, there'll be two buildings, yeah.
Yeah. So, it's your intention to hold on to the billing at 322?
Depending on the outcome of this, it may change.
I guess I have a question.
Sure.
If, if the new building would have the address of 322, then what would be the address of the current building?
Well, that number would be changed to whatever...
But that's based on the maps, that's what it should be named.
Right. So, the, if it's approved, then the address system changes for this half-block of property. So, we probably would, you know, have to, we do it in increments of two, so we probably would just assign something, and so, we'd end up at maybe 336 or something rather than, you know, 328, which I think is maybe the max, the last number that we typically use.
Dave, do you have any examples of other communities that may have had to go through a situation like this?
I'm not aware of, yeah. We're somewhat unique in that we have, you know, we're a pre-planned community, and we have a large gridiron area, and so, having a uniform address system, you know, works well in a gridiron area.
How do other communities lay out for a campus? Do they put a minimum lot and width, or...
We haven't researched that.
But we haven't done anything in our, for our community is what defines a campus for minimum square footage or anything like that? I mean, would be, that'd be something that we could possibly do, that we create something that's for a campus basis, that you're going to have so many, you know, square footage for a property, and then if you're going to call it your headquarters?
It's, I guess that's a decision that would be up to the city council.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to work with Alliance Bank here in capacities, and maybe we have to come up with a unique way to think about it. And if we create the entity, you know, and come up with an application process or review it, and then, you know, start the process, and bring it back to our zoning to discuss and see if it's something that, you know, we want to enter into for the future.
Yeah, I guess that would something that would require further discussion and further direction from the planning commission on what your thoughts are about that.
I mean, what brought this on forth, just from the building's permit status, or did the bank notify you, or did the city staff notify the bank that they're going to have to change address, or...
Well, typically, when anybody comes in for a building permit in which it's going to be a new building, you know, you have to assign an address.
So, the address was assigned to...
Yeah.
Okay.
Dave, in your experience then, 42-plus years, have you seen where a business simply moved down the block from where they were and constructed a new building such as we're doing at this time?
I'm sure there've been some occasions, you know, I can think of the Diocese, they kind of moved...
And their impact of an address change wouldn't be the same as us as being a regulated bank?
Yeah, I wouldn't know. I do know that their address change did go to Rome, though.
Well, I guess that's pretty important authority then. If we were to take our request to Rome, would that change?
We also want to clarify one thing. You have a bookkeeping, or not bookkeeping, you're going to be bringing different jobs down there. You're currently in a different building right now, correct?
Correct. We're in, we had been in three facilities. We've squeezed people into two because that other building was torn down, and the hope is just to get into one facility and consolidate some of our operations that are currently being housed in other facilities. We have seven branches throughout Minnesota, and our goal here, because of the workforce, is to consolidate and have that be a local workforce, and so, that's the reason. I don't know, I can't speak for the ownership of the bank and the architects and everybody that went through this process, but I can pretty well guess that we were anticipating in making this new facility, the hope that we would keep our same address. And so, it came as a little bit of a surprise to us that we're here today. But I also understand, being a former planning commission member myself, that these things, New Ulm is a city steeped in tradition. I have worked at a number of different places and have done mortgages and financed properties, and nobody has been more stringent on that grid program than the city of New Ulm. It makes reading legal descriptions the easiest I've ever done, so I have to give, tip our hats to the long traditions of that. And that being said, I think we also need to look toward the future in both in terms of what a new facility downtown is going to mean to the downtown environment and the technology that we're seeing with things like banking and financial institutions, and one wanting to make a commitment to New Ulm, I think, is a very positive thing.
I wanted to clarify that you are, it's more of a campus area because you're going to bring bookkeeping for seven different banks in there. I just want to clarify that for the public, that it's just not a bank, it's going to be a facility.
Absolutely. We want to try to get the most bang for our buck, having one roof, but it's going to have two floors and a basement, so yes, we plan on greatly utilizing the whole facility, you know, everything from records and computer servers and staff and all those things, and it's going to happen right here in New Ulm.
Jeff, to, just to further answer our question, you're correct. As Dan shared, we have seven locations, including downtown St. Paul, but all of the finance, IT, loan operations, deposit operations, and compliance and audit, internal audits going to be housed here in New Ulm for all seven locations, so.
So, do you currently have two locations in New Ulm?
Three. Well, we were in three. We have about 24 employees in the facility on 301 North Minnesota, and then, we had four employees in 314 building, which has since been demolished, and then about 24, five employees in the current building.
So, have you been working with different addresses for those businesses as well?
No, everything has been 322.
Okay.
We've been acting as a campus even though we're probably not really a campus, I don't know.
Right, right. And then, did I understand that your plans for that, what's, where the drive-through bank is located right now, your plans are not concrete on what you're going to do with that building yet?
No, that is not, that's yet to be determined, so.
Thanks.
On your application, you kind of alluded to the fact that it's a very big hardship for you to make that change. Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, just in my area, we officially have to notify the various entities that we do business with when we change, would change, even though the files were the, you know, the filing cabinets are just going to be moved from our current building down a few feet to the new building. It involves a process of seeking and getting approval. I sell mortgages to Freddie Mac, and they own the mortgages once we sell them, and so, we're responsible for notifying them the physical location of all those files. So, that process then, when they're moved, even a few feet, when the street address is changed, because one of the requirements we have is having a physical street address that we can report to them where those files are located, because at a moment's notice, they can come and audit us. So, that whole process has to be facilitated. If you take that in my area, the mortgages, and then the ag area and the commercial area have similar things with FSA and SBA, we would have to go through a similar process with them. So, it sounds on its surface to be, "Oh, you just fill some paperwork out and turn it in," but it's much more lengthy than that, and in essence, we need to let them get their approval in order to make that sort of a change, so.
Wouldn't all of that be done electronically in a matter of pushing a button?
No. I mean, because there's still paper, physical files that are maintained.
But the notifications and things like that are all, can be done electronically in this day and age, I would believe?
Well, we have to submit an application and paperwork along with a fee to facilitate that, at least in my part of it. At least in my part of it, I can't speak for other areas.
Well, it'd be very similar, but you know, as I alluded to before, it's in addition to that, it's the advertising, both paper uh and uh radio and ads that are publications, advertising that taken out, that might be a multiple term, a multiple year term kinda thing, so it requires changes in a lot of different resp- in respect to that.
Chair, um Bank Midwest currently or just recently moved to a new location, how do you differ from them?
They're they're just a retail bank, uh they don't really run the same level of operations that we would, I I believe their operations are mainly run out of Iowa. So that that's the difference here.
We're really the operational center for the seven location system.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, gentlemen, that that means that they would not have had to report to the various federal entities that you're referring to that they physically house paper documents and files in that location? Cause it's done at more of a headquarters for Bank Midwest?
I can't speak for them, but that's my understanding, is that they're more of a retail bank facility there. You know, they may have chosen their location just because they didn't have the physical size, you know, we own the whole block.
Right.
We've been anticipating uh making this expansion for a number of years. And and so um I can't speak to what they do there, but based on what I believe they conduct there on a day-to-day basis, we we wouldn't be doing the same.
That's what distinguishes your location from theirs, I understand, okay.
So you don't really want the three oh six number? So what are you proposing changing three twenty-two number two? What's your proposal on that?
Whatever would be the most acceptable to the city, I I think the the important aspect for us is to try to maintain the three twenty-two because that's the address we've been known by for so long. And we'd be, whatever would be the most accommodating in making the change to that other building, our our current building.
Just being upfront, I, we have to, we do have a city code and I'm struggling with that city code. If we're gonna eliminate a three twenty-two or the that area, we have to come up with something in on the system that is there for the whole city of New Ulm. And I'm struggling with that city code to to vary, make a variance for that. So I wanna hear your proposal too, what should the city do with that end of the block?
Well, I I guess again respectfully, I would request that you consider a change of, say, I think one of those maps. I I don't know, Dave, if you put that in there, but a proposal of three twenty-six or three twenty-eight. You know, obviously it would require an even number system, but with, again, with us owning the whole half a block, if it would go to to even number of something above three twenty-two, um, you know, it still could be in that twenty range, the three twenty-six, three twenty-eight.
So I know you own the whole half a block, but is there anything stopping you from thirty years from now, selling part of that?
No, no, uh-uh, not not where the existing facility is.
Possibility that.
Correct.
You would. And you would have to house the physical files in that old building to be able to continue to use that old address?
Well, the intent would be to house the the files with where the employees are that use them, I mean, they're they're working files. Obviously, it would be uh file cabinets, uh storage rooms, everything are intended to be moved where we're gonna be housing the employees that deal with them and work with them on a daily basis.
It does really seem as though you, if it, as you grow a campus is almost what you're talking about, you know, if you begin to grow this new building and you have the other building there as kind of your fallback, it feels like y- you may become a campus in that area, I guess I would like a little more information about that option for you all, but again, I I know it's not something that we have any information on tonight.
Yeah, the um, the idea of a campus is um just recognition that we have larger pieces of property that have one address and so in anticipation of that question by a member of the commission, I just wanted to advise you that we do have those kind of situations when it comes to addresses as well.
Okay, let me get this straight, you are planning on tearing down that old building?
That's not been determined for sure.
Hasn't, okay, okay, so now if you sell that old building down the road, there's no way you would be able to keep that the address currently you have?
Unless a new address is assigned to that current building.
Correct, okay.
Right.
Gotcha.
And that would really be what we would need to do as part of this, is we're not gonna have two buildings with three twenty-two.
So this must have been a little shocker to you when you guys found this out? Because otherwise you wouldn't be putting this much effort into it.
Correct.
And time and everything else to try to keep the current address.
It sounds really simple on its surface, but it it really isn't from at least our perspective.
Guess I'm gonna go to go to Dave and I guess I'm leaning towards a campus thought and to consider it. So I'm gonna lean to Dave for advice, so would we would table this and then come back for more advice from staff?
You have to remember that um their application is subject to the sixty-day rule. And so if you look at the date of their application, when we received it, I believe it was July one. So the city needs to take action on this request by, you know, sixty days from July one, so let's just round it off and say September first. So, um, you know, you you've got your next meeting after this one is the last Thursday in um August. But the next council meeting is probably after July one, so we'd have that issue to deal with.
Nothing says they can't resubmit it.
They could resubmit if.
So, so we could deny it today.
Yeah.
Then.
Table it.
Tape, no, we could deny it today.
You could deny it.
If we get to deny it today, we could bring it to council and doesn't have to necessarily be approved.
Well, the the other thing that that you could do is um you could hold a special meeting if you wanted to.
So we don't know like MLC that their address is based on the front door of the admissions office where that's physically located, we don't know how that was determined for sure.
No, I'm not, yeah, I don't know how the address was um was developed in that case, that predates, I'm sure all of us.
I myself, I would be trying to lean towards helping these guys out somehow or another.
Well, I'm in the same boat, I gotta I gotta speak up here someplace along the line, I'd like to see this happen because of they're doing a great thing for the city of New Ulm. By the same token, we do have a city code. And we are an advisory commission and we cannot change the rules of the code. That's my view, in my view, I have to agree with what Larry just said. That we need to deny this and refer this back to the city council and they can go ahead and approve it if they wish. But we can't change the code and we, our purpose here is to adhere to the code, as I understand it. If I could be.
But you also have variances.
And we have to be consistent.
Does not qualify for a variance with without an uh another decision on the other end of the block.
You know, we have to look.
That's my my recommendation and and that's where I'll have to come from, I'm gonna vote no to follow the code and re-request the city council to make that decision, they have the power to do that.
Okay, I I think if I can interject here, I think this is a two uh two-part process. Part one is you have a request for variance. And the variance is to allow the address of three twenty-two um at this new building location. The second part is if that's approved, then what happens as far as addressing the other lots um in this block? So I think first you have to take step one or the first the action and then um I I expect uh the next part would be delegated to staff and we would come up with um a proposed um numbering system for the remaining lots. And then um I guess that could go to, I don't know, that's council necessarily would even have to approve it.
Shot down completely then?
No.
For their benefit, would I be correct on that information?
I I think the the action before you today is do you wanna authorize them to use the address of three twenty-two for their new building? That's, I think, you you know, the issue that you, that's before.
And we can decide that or it goes to council after that?
Recommend it.
You 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 are a recommending body to the city council.
Can I ask you a question, Dave?
Sure.
Getting back to the campus, um it, how is that designated? Is there a process that an entity needs to go through to have an a a series of lots designated as a campus?
There is no designated process for it, the the term campus isn't found in our zoning regulations or in our subdivision regulations.
You as a panel today could designate this as a campus and 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 approve the address change on the basis that they would consider this to be a campus?
We could only make a recommendation of anything.
You know, I understand that, I'm just simply stating that there is no formal process to delineate a series of lots as a campus. So you have the authority to do that as part of your recommendation today. Ultimately, that would go to the city council, they could make the final decision on it, whether they feel that this would be a campus and that we could go ahead with uh making that a change to our address.
If I could comment, I I think um there is no basis in the city code for um a campus address. So I I don't know that this body is empowered to, you know, make that decision other than you could um direct the staff to um prepare an ordinance to that effect. Um, that would um, that would be an action that you could take. Um, but there's nothing there at the present time, so I, you know, I I don't know how, you know, you can you know, recommend something like that without it.
What kinda timeline you guys have?
Um, I chat, I uh spoke with our chief financial officer today and we have to he's waiting to submit the uh application uh for the, I shouldn't say the application, the update to the FDIC and the state regulatory agencies. And so he'd like to get that submitted as soon as possible, I I do not know if we have a hard line deadline and if we do, what that date is, but I do know it's waiting for the outcome of our our requests.
Cause you guys are probably a year out yet.
Um.
Less than a year, right?
Yeah. I personally, I I think we're looking at late first quarter of twenty twenty. Uh, the uh general contractor's telling me earlier than that, he's thinking year end. I think that's optimistic, uh given that it does rain occasionally in this part of the world and mess things up, but um, they're anticipating and still of the opinion that they're gonna have us in this new building by year end. I think that's optimistic in my point, my opinion, but.
But your address has to be official long before that in order to make all your other changes.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
We can't move until everything's official from the various agencies that we deal with. Didn't mean to put such a difficult one in front of you guys today. I've been in your chairs in the past and I I know how that can be.
You know, I struggle with just saying, all right, we wanna give variance and call it three twenty-two, you know, and then come back and then we have to redesignate the other parcel and then if that parcel ever got sold off, you know, and or you know, just for future reasons and you know, right now I'm just leaning towards denying it and then at the council, asking the council to direct back to the plan, the planning commissions and to come up with a change of the ordinance, you know, for a campus and then to re- resubmit and and start the process and, you know, so we have some. That's just my.
I'm on the same page, um that we we need to deny, but we need to probably recommend to the council an example of a campus or something like that.
Multi-building type deal.
Pardon me?
Multi-building, maybe not campus.
A change needs to take place, what I'm saying is they can make the change and and help me if I'm in error, if if this took a month or six weeks to go, that would not shut anything of what you're doing down, will it not?
No, I don't believe so, I don't, uh your your terminology shut down, no. Um, as far as this application that our CFO was waiting to submit, I'm I'm not sure of any hard deadline on that, um. I talked to Steve just an hour ago and I never, and I never thought about what his deadline was with that. I I know there's a timeframe, a minimum number of days prior to moving to a different building and we have to make sure the regulatory agencies have approved it. So um he's got the application ready to send in, waiting to see what to put in for the street address.
Well, I'm sensing that all of us here would like to do something. We're not here just fighting it, but I think in my case, we have to get that code changed. I mean, there's, the code has worked for years, there's not been anyone denied, although there's not been any approved that I'm aware of either. Is there?
No, we've never had any applications.
But the system has worked. And if it needs to be changed, we can't do that, we can only recommend that it be changed and to do it in some urgency to get it done for you. So that's kinda where I'm at.
Question of the rest of the commission and staff, can we recommend a change to the code uh in responding to their question? Or their request?
Can you recommend?
Can this body recommend that change without having to deny it and have the council make a change?
Part of your motion.
Yeah, the city council, you you're a recommending body, so you could recommend something to the city council, sure.
My concerns, and I'll I'll just be frank, uh in in one sense, I don't see this as any different than any other business that changes locations. Part of changing your business cards and your envelopes and all those things is just, that's an expense of of moving or building a new building. Um, however, I understand that this is a little little unique in light of the requirements that you have of designating a physical location of specific property or files that maybe doesn't fall on most other businesses. Um, I I'm also concerned that we don't name three twenty-two on a spot on the block uh where it comes before three eighteen or, you know, it that would completely throw our whole system out of whack and doesn't make any sense at all. Uh, I am comfortable with allowing that building to be called three twenty-two if we do have higher numbers beyond that that we can designate for the building north of that, that way there's still a pneumatic order. You own both properties, even if one property would be sold, like I said, at least you're not flip-flopping the numbers around so that it makes no sense. Uh, that would be my personal recommendation to approve that and make an exception in this case due to unique circumstances and requirements of this business. Um, and go from there, that's my feelings. And I know it's new and I know it's different and uh things, things that are new and different come up and I I'm comfortable rolling with some changes, I I don't believe it's gonna throw our whole addressing system out of whack to to do that.
Are you gonna put that in a motion?
I guess I was just thinking about.
That was a lot of emotion, I mean, motion right there, no.
From the regulatory authorities, though, you're saying that you have to let them know at a moment's notice where these files are, well, when we change the address, they're at a different address. So you're gonna change them the night that we switch your address? Cause these files are physically
That is a good point.
And you're not gonna tell them or, yeah, that they're moving, so are you out of compliance there?
There'd be a delay, uh obviously we need a new place to move them to in order for them to be moved. But prior to us being able to move them, we'll need to go through the process of letting them know where they're going to be. So I I would anticipate that delaying our moving from our existing building to the new building um because of that, cause we would have to go through the process of letting them know, hey, we're now at three oh four, three oh two, whatever um that new address might end up being.
I guess I'm not really understanding, if we change the address tomorrow, those files have physically moved addresses.
No, they don't move until we move them, we're we're gonna stay.
But if they come and and say, I wanna see your files at three twenty-two and we've now changed the address to three thirty-six, they're not at the address you said.
You know, I would anticipate with that notification, it would have to be with an estimated start date then, if if that answers your question. You know, I if we have to submit applications to change our street address.
Well, we're saying you wouldn't, if we if we approve your street address. Well, we're saying you wouldn't. If we, if we approve your street address change, then you don't have to submit a change.
Correct, correct, correct.
But you're kind of out of compliance in the meantime.
Well, and Dave's exactly right. Really, it's a two-part thing. In order to change our new building to three twenty-two, it's gonna pretty much, and I guess I hadn't thought about that in, in the verbal presentation, but it's pretty much necessitates changing the current building to three twenty-six or three twenty-eight.
I guess that's where her question is coming in.
So you do have an address change no matter what we do at some point.
Well, would, when would that change take effect?
Can we make the effective upon completion?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, that's.
I certainly think, um, if, um, you know, the commission and the city council wanted to, uh, delay the effective date, that you could do that certainly. Yeah.
Anyone else wish to speak on it? Thing is, it's a public hearing. With that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and then we'll deal with the issue.
Thank you.
Now, Dave, you told us we had to give some criteria as to why we'd want to grant this variance.
Well, there are conditions for granting a variance, and, and basically they're listed on the back of the application form.
Yeah.
And so, um, and, and I think the one that, um, uh, is perhaps harder to answer is what are the unique circumstances that justify the, um, the request? I think most of the other items are, you know, can be answered more easily.
So we could probably say unique situations that you're combining multiple locations and, uh, amount of legal paperwork tied with, uh, their business.
Yeah, the, those are unique, so, yeah.
So.
But that's unique, though.
Well.
Situation.
I think I see it as a financial institution has a different requirement to actually, uh, notify federal agencies as to where papers are physically located at an address, I think is, that I see as unique.
You know, and I think.
I guess I've been part of, you know, large organizations moving physical locations, insurance companies moving.
This, I mean, that, that's part of the, part of, part of the move.
So I guess, I guess I don't see it as unique. I guess I.
I think if it was just a, a, a place that you had to tell people your mail is, is arriving at that's different than it was before is the same as any other business.
Yeah.
But again, I don't know that an insurance agency or, or any other business, uh, has the same requirement from the feds as to really naming a physical location where you keep certain paper files.
I think it's unique that it's in the same block. If they were moving two blocks away, you wouldn't be asking for it.
I haven't heard of that.
CMS.
Correct.
So do. I'm just saying, so in, in the, in your experience with moving an insurance office, did they also have to do what the folks from the bank are describing? And contact federal agencies, fill out applications about an address change?
Their stationary change, uh-huh, yeah.
Well.
There's like eight hundred people.
Right.
Moving.
Okay.
Physical locations, yeah.
Don't wanna, don't wanna stop the discussion, but as I understand it, we need to have a motion on the floor before we discuss what the, whatever the motion is. And we have no motion at this time. We should have a motion to approve or deny, and then we open it for discussion.
I've moved the approval of changing the address of their new building to three twenty-two and re-addressing their current building to what staff feels is appropriate. And allowing this change under unique circumstances, uh, that the bank has laid out. And that's my, that's my motion.
So your motion is to approve with those conditions?
Correct.
I would put a second on that.
Okay, now we have a motion with, uh, to approve the request with the conditions. I'm not gonna try to repeat. Okay, now we shall open it for discussion.
And I guess I would like to add to change that physical address once they're done with their construction and ready to move in.
I accept that.
Say that again?
I'd like to make that change of address once their, their construction is done with their new building. That upon completion, that's the physical designation for that site. To be three twenty-two, and then we look for staff's report for if it's three twenty-six or three twenty-eight. And maybe bring it back to, for a work session for future, for the planning commission to look at the option of talking about a campus. You know, then we have, include that for our future zoning.
That won't solve the problem with, what do you do with three twenty-two on the other end of the block, will it?
Staff would come back with a recommendation of an even number to change that one at a later date. So it's a two-part.
So we're recommending approval and the staff coming up with a.
New address.
New address?
For the property north of there.
And our reasons are going to be what? That we're gonna do that?
Because of the unique, because of the unique circumstances and requirements required of the bank.
I think the uniqueness is that they're moving in the same block.
I shouldn't say.
Clear as mud that we give this to the council?
Well, I think, um, we, we understand what the motion is, and I think one of the conditions. And, um, then, um, and the reasons for, um, the, uh, the motion, I think, yeah.
I don't wanna put you on the spot, but yes, I do. I need to have a little clearer thing of what we're gonna give the council, so help me, what you're gonna take to the council.
Okay, um, as I understand it, the, um, motion is to approve the variance request. Um, subject to, um, staff, um, uh, preparing, um, um, addresses uh, for the remaining parcels of property in that half block of property, or, yeah, in block sixty-two north. And that the reasons for approving the request are the, um, shall we say, the unique functions, um, that are, um, required of this particular, um, bank location. And the, um, um, the, the difficulty and the hardship in, um, having to, um, change addresses. Is that a fair?
That sums it up nicely.
And that they're moving in the same block.
And that they're moving in the same.
I can live with that.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
My problem was with the city code, and I think if we do that, with that request to the council, we can get by making a, trying to make a rule changer tonight. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This'll go to the city council, as you just heard, as he's gonna present.
August sixth. Sixth.
Sixth, four thirty. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four point one, council decision concerning the planning commission matters in July.
Okay, at the city council's July second meeting, they approved with conditions the interim use permit that was requested by Harold Anamorado, who's operating the woodworking business at, um, seven eighteen North Broadway. Um, that permit was for a three-year time period, and, and the consent agreement and the, uh, resolution approving, uh, the request have all been filed with the county. Um, at that same meeting, the council received an update, um, on the, um, implementation of, um, some of the existing code requirements regarding, uh, blight and that, um, and, uh, you know, locations within the community that, um, uh, that have been, um, identified uh, and where actions have been, uh, requested on part of the property owner to remedy, um, those, um, conditions. And that was presented by the city manager and the, uh, police chief. I wasn't at the meeting. I don't know if councillor Mack has any, uh, remarks on what was said, or?
Dave Borker gave an update on how many, uh, letters were submitted, and I believe he said he was about eighty percent, uh, responded, uh, to, to everything within the community. Right now, staff has just been focused on residential, not commercial at this point in time. Staff is gonna be working on that.
Good, thank you. Um, at the July sixteenth, uh, meeting, um, we, we had public hearings on the final plat of Oak Bluff's eighth edition and, uh, Palmer Edition. Um, those were approved. Then there were public hearings on, um, the, um, a request for the use of tax abatement assistance by, um, Corrine Incorporated. They're doing business as windings. And then also, um, Kraft requested an extension of their, um, compliance date for their, uh, job creation, um, requirements. And that's associated with, um, some assistance that, um, they received, um, through the state of Minnesota, actually through the city from the state of Minnesota. Um, and then associated with those last two actions, there were documents that had to be revised. And so those were also approved by the city council. Um, there also was discussion about the installation of a metal portrait of Christian Prignitz, who is the individual who prepared the plat for the city of New Ulm. And that was proposed to be placed on the, uh, north side of the PUC's power plant. Um, and that was tabled and directed, I believe, to the monument.
Correct, to the cemetery and monuments commission.
Okay. Um, there also was discussion at that meeting about railroad crossings. Um, I'd encourage you to drive across a few of them to get a good understanding of the nature of that problem. And then, um, they also received a report, or not a report, they actually took action on the German Park Amphitheater project. Uh, they authorized the preparation of plans and specifications and to go to bid, uh, for that project. I guess that concludes.
Some of those crossings are so bad that a, a detour of, make your own detour around some of those would be beneficial.
I'd just maybe touch base on that. City manager did forward out that, uh, the railroad has been in contact, and they forward, ported onto a letter to us, and they're working on it. So, once we know more, it'll, it's yet to be determined when.
Try and save our cars in the meantime, right?
That's it.
And then we got the heritage preservation. Anything there?
Uh, we had three design reviews. Uh, one was for Mr. Bodie's storefront at Five North Minnesota. Um, that was approved with a, um, he's doing a wood storefront with, uh, windows, um, pretty much capturing back to what it looked back when it was, uh, original. Um, Lamp lighter, um, is looking at putting a lighted sign, um, on the back entrance. And internally lit signs in the historical districts aren't generally allowed. Um, that was tabled to get some more information and, um, bring that back to the next meeting. Um, the way of the cross is doing some steeple repair, um, replacing like-for-like and doing some painting up there. And they are also scheduled, I believe it's August twentieth, to have a, um, presentation to, um, gain national register status at, um, Shepoe is having, um, uh, going over their, their application. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the commission? Well, if not, I just, I'm gonna thank you all tonight. I mean, everybody participated, and I know this is a tough, a difficult situation. It's something, we all want to do something, and sometimes we can't always do the things that we really like to do. So it's difficult, and I appreciate all your involvement in, in it. Thank you. With that, meeting is adjourned.